Welcome, everyone, to our Weaver County Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 29, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bolos. I am joined by Commissioners Gage Frower and Commissioner Jim Harvey. I will invite the audience to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, we'll have an invocation or a moment of silence by Christopher Crockett. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind eternal Father in heaven, at the beginning of this commission meeting, we take a moment to bow our heads and reflect on all the many blessings which Thou hast bestowed upon us. We are so grateful to live in this community, to associate with one another. We are grateful to have the opportunity to deal with the public's business and find ways to improve others' lives. Father, we ask that Thou will please be with us through this coming week, that we will have opportunities to serve, to seek out those who are struggling, and just to help other, someone else's day better, be better. We love these so very much, dear heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Item D on our agenda is Commissioner comments. To start off, I would like to present our Stall of Fame Award. We have a lot of people in attendance, so a lot of fun stuff going on today. But our Stall of Fame Award is going to be given to Jeremy Matthews, and I would invite Baki, if you'd like to come forward and speak to that. It'd be great.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, when Shelley sent me and said that you guys picked him, slam dunk choice, easy. And I thought of something I have in my office. It's a graph of motivation versus discipline. With motivation, you have a big graph, and then it fizzles out and gets small, and then there's discipline. Jeremy is a very disciplined person, and he's just so steady that when you look back at the 2080 errors he gives us a year, we're getting way more work out of Jeremy. He's always doing stuff that goes above and beyond. He's done all the record of surveys, defining all the center lines of our roads. This helps in the future when we have subdivisions. Everyone's tying to that line. We're having a consistent road that's not so staggered. He's doing, we got, when Fred Maylin, he was our county surveyor in the '40s and somewhat in the '60s, they brought all his files here when he passed away. Jeremy is currently georeferencing those on our GeoGizmo. The filing act for record of surveys didn't start until 1987, so a lot of surveys you only have from '87 going forward. He's taking all these old surveys and put them on there for surveyors, property owners that may not have ever had a survey on their property to help them with their property rights. He is doing a lot of right-of-way work. When we ask him if we need to look at something on a road, he's already jumping on it. And all you've got to do is mention it to Jeremy that, hey, Jeremy, and he's like, what do you need? It's never a grimace. It's always just something that he's doing, or he's thinking of ways, or sometimes I don't even like mentioning something to him because he's going to start working on it on the backside. He's been here about 10 years, and just knowing how good he is, and he's grown, and, you know, he became licensed here, and sometimes I'm scared to bring up stuff to him because he knows way more than I do already. It scares me. He's a good dad, and I just think he deserves it.
That's awesome.
Did you want him up here?
Yeah, we do want him up here. While Jeremy's coming up, I want to just read the, it's not really a nomination for Stall of Fame, but these are the awards that are submitted to HR, and this is where we often get our Stall of Fame recipients. So, this is what was submitted about Jeremy. Helped explain an easement through a property for two worried customers. Completely blew them away with his knowledge of easements and what rights they had. Great customer service. That's awesome. Thank you, Jeremy. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
We're going to get a photo, so don't go anywhere.
Now you're going to get a photo. He's sure. That was so Jeremy's.
Take it out.
There we go.
Hey, Commissioners, any other comments before we move on?
Jeremy, I just want to go back to Jeremy for a minute. He's got a, he does have a great work ethic. I've always found him focused in doing things. Plus, if, when he retires from this job, he only said two words, but he's got a great radio voice. He'd be a fantastic voice for radio, so.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Jeremy. What he does is very important. Some people don't understand how important that is. Not too many people in this room remember Fred Maylin. I happen to, and I ran into some of his work through the years in my previous job. And just how critical it is that the county has competent, qualified people to set those property lines, because if they're not set, we obviously don't have confirmation of property lines, et cetera, and it ends up in lawsuits. So, we do a lot for the public. They do a great job for the public, making sure that property lines, that those deed lines are historic there, and then set, I think, since '87. Going forward, this will be a great thing for future. So, appreciate all your work you've done. I, for one, appreciate it very much. And the public, even though they probably don't understand it, they appreciate it, too. Believe me.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, item E on our agenda is Agenda-related public comments. This is an opportunity for people in attendance to make comments on any item that is listed on the agenda. I would ask that, because we have two public hearings that are related to the budget, that if your comments are for the budget, please wait until that time. But if there's anyone else who'd like to come forward on another item, you're welcome to do so now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item F, presentations. This is our presentation of the 2025 Winning in Weaver Awards. And Commissioners, before we play the video, I want to just read for the public what these awards are. So, this is how the nomination is accepted. The first is the Rising Star Award. It's designed to recognize the talent and determination of tomorrow's leaders in the county. Candidates have demonstrated the ability for self-growth and the ability to help others grow. The Service Star Award is the champion of a customer service culture. They create a customer service experience that stands apart, ensuring that service is interwoven into the fabric of the team they work with or the great organization. This coworker understands the relationship between internal and external customer satisfaction. The Leadership Award, this candidate has established themselves as a leader and role model. They have a proven track record and a high level of achievement serving as a role model to other coworkers in the county. They have achieved success in their area and have guided others as a mentor or sponsor to achieve what they might not have thought possible. Above and Beyond Award, this award honors individuals demonstrating outstanding achievements in the workplace, exceptional contributions toward efficiency and effectiveness or operations, special efforts in promoting workforce excellence, or outstanding customer service. Learning is Power, the Learning is Power Award goes to an employee who is the most avid learner, the one who is always seeking to pick up a new skill or ability. So, with that being said, if we can cue the video, it'd be great.
July is Winning in Weaver Month, and we would like to celebrate a few of our outstanding employees who have made a great impact here at Weaver County. The Rising Star Award goes to Lauren Thomas. Lauren is a deputy civil attorney here at Weaver County. She works through complex issues and offers practical solutions to various departments, making her an invaluable resource. Lauren's talent, determination, and support for others marks her as one of the county's leaders of tomorrow. The Service Star Award goes to Candida Prieto. Candida is a business specialist at the Weaver County Library Ogden Valley Branch. She does an exceptional job making sure every person gets the help they need and is someone you can always depend on. Candida has a seemingly endless amount of compassion. She truly cares about the people she serves and offers them the best possible experience when they visit the library. The Leadership Award goes to Cassie Bybee. Cassie is the general manager for the Ogden Echoes Conference Center and Perry's Egyptian Theater. She is the embodiment of strength, passion, and purpose, an exceptional leader who has firmly established herself as a role model throughout the county. Cassie mentors, uplifts, and inspires while leading with authenticity. The Above and Beyond Award goes to Deputy Cameron Young. Deputy Young is a medical deputy and drone team member for the Weaver County Sheriff's Office. He has unwavering commitment to duty through his exceptional work ethic, professionalism, and respect toward inmates, colleagues, and the community. Deputy Young has a genuine desire to make a positive impact, demonstrating that law enforcement is not just about maintaining order, but also about building relationships. The Learning is Power Award goes to Jessica Clark. Jessica is the Public Relations Manager for Weaver County. She has a Master of Professional Communication from Weaver State University and is enrolled in the Leadership Northern Utah Program. Jessica actively seeks out diverse perspectives and readily shares her expertise, fostering a collaborative and enriching work environment. Congratulations to this year's recipients.
You know, we get a lot of nominations for these awards, these Winning in Weaver Awards, Commissioners, and it's tough to narrow down. But I think that we've chosen five outstanding individuals, and I'm really excited to honor them today. So, we won't say too much more, because the video said a lot of it, but I will say, as we come forward to take our photo with these individuals, just one little piece, or you might choose to do so, Commissioners, but for Lauren, I want to say, Lauren acts like an attorney who's been here for 12 years. She came in right out of, right out of school and joined our team and hit the ground running. There's not much that she can't find out for you, and she's just been amazing. It blows me away to see someone who acts like they've got all this experience under their belt when really...
I agree.
Not so much. So, that's awesome. Anything else?
Well, with all of them, I appreciate. Candida, your work up in the Ogden Valley, especially through this past year. It's been a lot of ebb and flow up there, and you've done a wonderful job. I can't tell you enough, I've just, I've watched Cassie through the years, and I've just grown to appreciate how she works at the ground level. She'll walk down a hallway, and if there's a piece of paper, she'll pick it up because there's not a job beneath her, yet she'll work with multimillion-dollar donors and secure extra funding for our Perry's Egyptian Theater, our conference center, all while managing a great construction project in conjunction with Sean and his team. It's just phenomenal. We'd go on and on, but I just appreciate, I appreciate those, and all the others who were mentioned, but that's, you're deserving, and we appreciate you.
Just, what an amazing group of people. And I would just say this, the reason that we continue to win in Weaver as a county is because you five, along with a lot of the nominations, are winners. And you make sure that your duties, your first line of duty, is to serve the public. And I can say from the commission, I think we can say without doubt that we very much appreciate all your efforts because of what you do, serve the public, and makes us all in Weaver County continue to be winners. So, continue to be winners, and we love what you do. We love this county. Keep it up. Thanks very much.
I will add one more comment for Jessica. She is in our office, so we get a frontline view of what she does, and she works really hard, and bringing our PR in-house has been a phenomenal asset to us, having the ability to get our message out immediately and without delay and in such a professional manner. We really appreciate that. And Cameron Young, I wanted to read just a little bit about his nomination, which is so important in Corrections. His ability to remain composed in challenging situations speaks to his deep dedication and understanding of the importance of his role, earning the trust and admiration of those around him. Beyond his professional skills, his dedication inspires others and reinforces the values of integrity, respect, and professionalism. So, thank you. All right. Let's go down and get some photos. We'll start with Lauren. Bring him up. Bring him up. Want to take our picture? Let's do a smile three, one, two, three. Candida. Round three, one, two, three. Cassie. Smile three, one, two, three. Cameron? Smile three, one, two, three. Keep going, one, two, three.
Oh, my gosh.
Smile three, one, two, three. And Jessica. Put the camera down.
Yes.
I want you to take Justin's picture. Yeah, I'm helping him. It's the little red button, right? Okay, one, two, three. One, oh, it's recording. I know what he says. One, two, three. Do you want to get one? Do we get all the recipients together? Do you want hers or his? Because I'm taking it. You know, I thought I wouldn't look at this and be like, this is easy. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay? Let's get just the recipient.
Yeah, okay.
He was ready for his cosap. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Right, that's always a good time, recognizing those people. Thank you all. Thanks for those who came to support, especially you little girls. Oh, yeah, we have your boxes. If you got an award, hold on. If they're not, if they left, we'll track them down. Okay, item G on our agenda is consent items. Number one, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $23,811.14. Number two, requests for approval of warrants, numbers 105543 through 105605, and 492203 through 492281 in the amount of $1,879,765.23. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Jason Horn, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You ready for this?
Are you?
It's pretty big. Purchase order summary, it looks like we had total purchase orders of four. Total amount was $24,000. Forty-six percent, or $11,000, for the transfer station for trauma repairs and fuel. The other 42% is for the roads department. That was for $10,000, and that's heavy equipment rental. The warrant summary, there were 124 total warrants. The total amount for that was $1.9 million. Thirty-eight percent, or $722,000, is for ramp awards to Washington Terrace and Roy. Thirteen percent, or $236,000, is for the OACC remodel. Twelve percent, or $230,000, is for Weaver Human Services, the monthly contribution. Seven percent, or $133,000, is contribution to Convention and Visitors Bureau. Six percent, or $122,000, is for escrow releases for B&amp;H Investments and Eagle Ridge Vest, and also, sorry, vests for the SWAT team. And five percent, or $95,000, is for the Public Defender Office. That's contracted services. And the top five vendors is City of Washington Terrace at $500,000, Hogan and Associates Construction at $236,000, Weaver Human Services at $232,000, Roy City at $222,000, and Ogden Weaver Convention Visitors Bureau for $133,000.
Any questions?
None for me.
You were going to ask if there were any...
I was going to ask if there were any questions I might be able to assist you with at this time.
Doesn't sound like there are any. Thank you, Jason. Item four, request for approval of new business licenses. And number five, request from the Sheriff's Office for approval to surplus five video monitor cabinets.
Adam Chair?
Please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the items listed in consent, or G, one through and including five, as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item H, public hearings. Number one, request for a motion to adjourn public meeting and convene public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. Item two is a public hearing to discuss amendments to the operating and capital budget of Weaver County for the 2025 calendar year. Stephanie Ebert.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I have the following items that we have amended our 2025 operating and capital budget for the year. We pass our budget in November, or December of 2024, knowing that there will be some reasons to open that budget back up and amend it in the following year, which we have experienced this quarter. So, the first section of budget changes that I'll go over are related to grants and other revenues. We had a $3.8 million grant that we received from the state for the ice sheet remodel. And then we had some various health department grants that we have received that are ongoing, that we just have adjustments in amounts and so forth. So, we see increases in our revenues and then related increases in our expenditures for those. We also had some reporting for our jail grants, first responder, COSAP, and RISE grants that we needed to make some adjustments in how we budgeted for those. The second group are related to personnel costs. We have been working on a compensation study for the last year. And the first tranche of that, we have elected to focus on our public safety, staff over at the Sheriff's Office to begin with. And we have increased our budget for those compensation adjustments in the amount of $2 million for those, for the results that we have received from that compensation study. And then we also have a transfer station position that was added due to some increased workload. We needed another truck driver there. And then, the last group are just other expenditures, mostly related to equipment, things that have needed repairs, emergency repairs and so forth that weren't budgeted for, as well as some rollovers from projects that had not been completed in 2024. So, that is the first public hearing that I have to present today.
Stephanie, if you don't mind, I'll have you just take a seat, and we'll accept comments for that.
Okay.
That first public hearing. If there's anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to any of those adjustments, amendments that Stephanie talked about, you're welcome to do so now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
All right, and another requirement that we have in state statute is that we have to have a public hearing on any time we have an increase, a compensation increase to any of our head or chief of county department or division, or chief, assistant, or deputy of individuals, or elected officials. And so, due to some amendments related to changes in our policy on vehicles, we have made some adjustments to some of our division directors that have take-home vehicles, so that we're reporting that information correctly. And then, the second group we have is, again, related to the compensation study that we have been working on in the Sheriff's Office. And we have three chief deputies that we anticipate will be affected by the changes in that compensation. So, those individuals and their increases are listed in that second group of the second public hearing. So, if you have any questions with those, I can answer those as well. Or I'll take a seat.
Okay, please take a seat. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak to those issues and those amendments? Okay, seeing none. Item five is a request for a motion to adjourn the public hearings and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. We're now back in a public meeting, ready to go to action on public hearings. I'll read that first, and then, Commissioners, if you have any comments. I do have one question of clarification for the public, Stephanie, but I will be looking for a request to approve Resolution 33-2025, amending the operating and capital budget of Weaver County, including compensation increases of certain executive county officers for the 2025 calendar year. Comments, questions?
Happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Go ahead with the motion.
With the comments. So, I'd move to approve Resolution 33-2025, amending the operating and capital budget for Weaver County, including the compensation increases of certain executive county officers for the 2025 calendar year. Let me just, first off, thank Stephanie, and of course, Scott Park had a great deal to do with this. This is something we go through every year. This is not unusual. As we start off in November the past year, it doesn't always go exactly as planned, but it's time, we need to make budget changes, which is not unusual. We do that on businesses, we do that on our own family budgets. But in this case, I wanted to highlight a couple of items. The big... The big item, of course, comes about from the compensation study. That's something that we started quite a while ago and is now on the verge of being completed, and made some recommendations. And I think that we have fully supported the recommendation that we paid for that study, and that's reflected in this operating budget. The second part of the adjustments had to do with our division directors for compensation increases. I just want to be clear on that, that these compensation increases offset the ability that we allowed these division directors to take automobiles or trucks home with them, because they have duties that require them sometimes to leave early in the morning, late at night, so it just, again, it's in the public's best interest that these division directors have their vehicles ready for service. And that's just a, because of federal tax law, it's a necessary change that we made. Really, it's just a, what I call a pass-through, so that they can have their trucks without having additional tax. It's a fair, equitable way to handle vehicles with these division directors. That's, people may see the compensation increases and be concerned about that. Let's just be clear, it's just a trade-off, making sure that they're reimbursed for any potential federal taxes.
Second with the comment, Madam Chair.
First off, with regards going to, and I don't want to put the focus there, but the need for an employee to take a vehicle home in the event of an emergency, there are many things that are done by way of speaking to emergencies, and so there are people on our county team that it's cost-effective for the county to do it this way, and that's the reason we're doing it. We also, I also want to speak to the second half of that presentation. Instead of excluding chiefs in the pay study, we made a conscious decision to include those in the ranks, not just the line-level guys, but in the ranks of the pay study, thus following, not necessarily the recommendation there, but following the recommendation of Baker Tilly. This was an extension. Baker Tilly, that's the company that did the salary survey. They are experts in their field. They do this all day, every day, 365 days a year, and they've done it for decades. They know what they're doing. I've got confidence in their ability, I've got confidence how they drill down, I've got confidence, they've taken nearly a year, or almost, a little more than a year to do this, when we paid for the study. We not only paid for a study for the whole county, but we paid extra so they could do a deeper dive into first responders and law enforcement specifically. Our line level, especially our line-level deputies, have been patient. This has been tough for the Sheriff's Department on that, especially with enforcement, and at the recommendation of our good Sheriff Arbonne, we focused on enforcement only out there. So it breaks parity a little bit, we respect that, but that's following his recommendation, and I trust very much the information that came back to us from Baker Tilly, because it's tangible. We follow the numbers, we follow the data that's behind it. It's, the study's extensive, and I think, Jessica, I think right after this meeting, it'll be posted, where people can get on and see that. Is that right? You're giving me the eyes of no. Okay, sorry, wrong, not Jessica. I'll go to Emily. We're not ready yet on that.
No, not quite. Have some more days.
Okay, so there you go. So for those who didn't hit, because she didn't have a mic, it'll be ready in the next few days, it'll be online, that people can go there and see that study, so there's full transparency. But I want those who might be in the room here today, those who might be listening at a later date, that I absolutely, fully trust this Baker Tilly. The next thing I want to make sure is mentioned, we were questioned or queried over the year. Well, once we get the news back from Baker Tilly, will we follow it? Yes, we'll follow Baker Tilly. We're going to follow that. And I'm also really, Stephanie, and this goes to those in this room and everybody down line, we've been able to do some crafting, so that we can not take this in steps, but do this all in one lump sum, to get it done fully in this year and not take two or three years to make this right. To get this right, right off the bat. And so, following that Baker Tilly study, which I've got full confidence in their recommendation, Baker Tilly's recommendation, that's my second, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, before we do a roll call, I just wanted to clarify something, Commissioner Harvey.
Please.
I think you used the wrong terminology.
I probably could.
I heard a couple of deep breaths in the audience. As we implement the study, and the results of the study, it was requested by the sheriff to focus on line level, not parity.
Okay, that's...
Parity exists.
Probably, yeah.
That's a big deal.
Sorry, that is a big deal. I stand corrected.
That is one thing that Baker Tilly did, say that we were doing well, that other counties who have broken parity have seen a lot of challenges in their corrections divisions. So they gave us kudos for having parity and recommended that we continue that, so I just wanted to make that correction, so that the gasps can relax.
And I stand corrected. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Oh, wait, I did have a question of clarification, Stephanie, if you wouldn't mind, just for the public, the transfer station additional employee, can you tell us how that's funded?
So the transfer station is a standalone fund, and they have a fund balance, and so we pulled from the fund balance, anticipating that because of the increased workload, we will have some additional revenue to help cover that offset.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't part of the general fund. Okay, I have a motion and a second, ready for the roll call.
Roll call vote for Resolution 33-2025. Commissioner Forrester?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Sheriff Bollos?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item I, adjournment.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're adjourned.